It is seven o'clock on April 5th, 2022, and this is the first Orman Beach City Commission meeting, regular City Commission meeting for the month of April. We are in commission chambers and we'll call the meeting to order. I hope you felt welcomed when you came in tonight. Robert Carolyn, our Leisure Services Director, and Captain Smith, Captain D.W. Smith, served as our greeters this evening. Thank you. I want to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you. To my right, your left, our Recording Secretary, Taylor Lockard, our City Clerk, Susan Dotteris, Commissioner from Zone 1, Dwight Selby. Commissioner from Zone 2, Troy Kent. To my left and your right, our Deputy Mayor and Zone 3 Commissioner, Susan Persis. Commissioner from Zone 4, Rob Littleton. Our City Manager, Joyce Shanahan. Assistant City Manager, Claire Whitley. City Attorney, Randy Hayes. And way to my left and way to your right are our Chiefs. Police Chief, Jesse Godfrey, and Acting Fire Chief, help me out, Chief. Dave King, that's right, thank you. It's not written down, sometimes I just have a momentary lapse. At this time, if you would please silence your cell phones, make sure that they're silenced, and we'll rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Invocation given by Pastor Neil Ganzel Jr. from Coquina Presbyterian Church.
I would ask that, as I pray, we all remember that there is a nation that is being ravaged. Images of all the children and the wives running for their lives and the men back in the midst of it trying to stave off a terrible invasion. And I think we would do well to pray for them. And I'm reminded in Psalm 136, which begins and ends with this statement. Give thanks to the Lord, for he is good, and his love endures forever. Father, we thank you that you are exactly that, that in Jesus Christ you have shown yourself loving and kind beyond all of the measure of the sins of men and women in this world for the last thousands of years. And Father, we regret and grieve the display once again of that wicked violence that involves money and involves power and involves forcing people to do something they don't want to do. And we pray for the people in Ukraine. We pray for the husbands and the fathers and the grandfathers that are back fighting in the streets while their wives and their children are scattered all over that part of Europe waiting for an outcome. We ask you, please, Lord, that you would intervene by the powers of this world, that this might be one time where this kind of behavior is forced to a halt in the interest of peace and justice and love. We pray for our own administration, that you would help them to lead in that. We plead with you, Lord, to help the people of Ukraine. And Lord, we thank you that we live in a place where we don't have this kind of stuff happen to us. We thank you for this beautiful city in which we live. We thank you for the competent men and women we have seated before us and in the chairs out around us here managing this beautiful city and keeping it beautiful and a safe place to live. We thank you for our nation, for the liberty and the freedoms that we enjoy here, having won those in just those same kind of circumstances hundreds of years ago. And thank you that we continue to enjoy that liberty. We ask you to give wisdom to these men and women who are governing us, that they will be found yielding to you in their thinking and their feelings. We pray that you would guide them in wisdom so that they can, tonight, yet close another great meeting of all that I've been in, Father. This is a beautiful place with good, competent people that are helping us all by their governance. I pray these things all in the name of Jesus Christ, my Lord.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated and before we get started with our presentations and proclamations, I want to take just a moment of silence to think about, pray for, whatever you want to do, the folks that are facing such a difficult situation in the Ukraine. Deputy Mayor Persis has talked about it, how lucky we are to live where we do and live the type of lifestyle that we have. And then Pastor Ganzel spoke so eloquently during the prayer as well. So if you would, please, just take a few minutes, a few seconds to remember those folks. Thank you. We're going to move to presentations and proclamations. The first one is for Julia Davidson-Trillo. And I was thinking earlier today, as I was driving around our city, I thought maybe if I don't issue this, she'd have to stay. We could keep her, but that's not really fair to her. So Julia, if you would, please, come forward. Hopefully you'll bring your family. And I would love for you to face the audience and also have your board members and your volunteers from Main Street surround you as well. I need you guys more centered on the city seal, if you will. That's fine. Julia, you and your family, right there? And then, I think that works pretty well. All right, let me get through this. Whereas Julia Davidson-Trillo has been a resident of Orman Beach for many years, she grew up in the area and her family has been an integral part of Volusia County. Whereas Julia is a graduate of Seabreeze High School, she left to pursue a college education and received her master's degree in journalism from Columbia University. She spent 20 years in New York City performing in musicals and Off-Broadway productions before returning to her hometown. And whereas Julia has served many distinguished roles in the community, including Managing Director of Seaside Music, a member of the Board of Directors of the Volusia County Cultural Alliance, and President of the Orman Memorial Art Museum, as well as various roles at the Daytona Beach News-Journal, which her family owned, and more. And whereas Julia has served as Executive Director of Orman Main Street since 2012, the Florida Main Street Program is administered by the Florida Department of State Division of Historical Resources, and the program encourages economic development and historic preservation through the revitalization of Florida's downtowns, which are the community's heart and soul. Whereas Julia has been instrumental in the renewal of our heart and soul downtown Orman Beach. The downtown is visible, thriving, and beautiful due to her contributions, including her work on the Community Redevelopment Agency's Master Plan and public art ordinance, which will be everlasting in the city. Whereas during the pandemic, Julia's outreach to small businesses was paramount in providing comfort and advice as they faced a challenging economic landscape. And whereas Julia works tirelessly to make art accessible to all and is responsible for the creation of the city's mural program. Julia is retiring at the end of this month and will be able to spend more time with family and traveling. Although she'll be missed in her current role, we hope to see her continued contributions and talents in the community, including at the city Repertory Theater. Now, therefore, I vote Partington on behalf of the entire Commission of Orman Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim today, April 5th, 2022, as a day to recognize Julia Davidson-Trillo in the city of Orman Beach and encourage all residents to join me in wishing Julia all the best in her well-deserved retirement. Congratulations.
I just want to say thank you. This is a team sport. Main Street is a wonderful organization and it has wonderful board members and volunteers, but it also has a wonderful relationship with the city and with its commission and with its staff. And that has made all the difference in the world. So if I have been able to accomplish anything in the 10 years, it is because of all of you and not just because of what I have done. So thank you very much.
Don't go anywhere. Julia, I want to present you with a key to the city of Orman Beach for all your efforts. Truly an amazing job. I know Dwight worked with you, Susan has worked with you. I believe Commissioner Kent may have worked with you as the Main Street Representative. And just glowing reviews. It's amazing the amount that you have accomplished in these years. And so you will truly be amazed. So thank you very much. Yep. Now smile for the camera. All right, next up is Sean Finley, Public Works Director. And this is Water Conservation Month. Sean, I want to thank you for accepting this proclamation on behalf of water conservation. Your efforts, particularly in the reuse area, have been amazing over the last couple of years and really a point person for the city of Orman Beach when it comes to water conservation. We work with the state of Florida, our management districts, Volusia County, and all try to work together. And you're the point person for that, to manage the water resources as much as possible. And so we want to thank you for that and present you with that proclamation. Thank you. Appreciate it. And then Evelyn, where did I see you? Yes, there she is. Evelyn, come on up with anybody that you want to join you that is National Crime Victims Rights Week and also Child Abuse Prevention Month. Evelyn, as our city's victim advocate is accepting both proclamations, Evelyn does an amazing job for us in so many ways that the public never really gets to see or know about. Oftentimes, the information she deals with is confidential. Oftentimes, people that are going through difficult times don't want their struggles to be public. But Evelyn is a master with not only empathy but knowledge of all the different social service agencies that are out there available to help. And she truly, truly does an amazing job. So you know, National Crime Victims Rights Week is something that is so critically important when you've been the victim of a crime and you've been violated in that way, whether someone has stolen from you, whether you've had violence perpetrated against you, no matter what the situation. Unless you've gone through that, it's hard to understand what you're dealing with. But Evelyn, through years and years of working with people who have suffered that, knows best how to help those individuals. And it's truly an amazing asset for the city of Orman Beach. So Evelyn, thank you for accepting that proclamation on National Crime Victims Rights Week. The other one speaks for itself, Child Abuse Prevention Month. And luckily, we don't have as much of a problem in Orman Beach as some areas, but occasionally it does happen and it's heartbreaking when you hear or read the stories of children that have been abused. And so having dedicated staff and resources available to help those folks is critically important. So thank you for accepting the proclamation on behalf of Child Abuse Prevention Month as well. Appreciate it. Please.
For all victims. And the goal is to help crime victims just find their justice. As President of the Victim Services Coalition, I understand the power of partnerships, expanding our network, and building a multidisciplinary response team to help crime victims. Our allied professionals meet each month with a different agency, spotlighting and training how they can be involved to help us help others. And our goals are victim-centered, culturally sensitive, and trauma-informed.
Thank you very much. Susan, no cards?
No cards.
Approval of the minutes from the City Commission meeting of March 22nd, 2022. They've been sent to the Commission for review, also posted to the city's website. Any additions, deletions, or corrections?
I'll move approval, Mayor.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, and we'll show those passing unanimously. Our consent agenda. Any member wish to pull any items from the consent agenda?
Move approval of our consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Would any Commission member like to comment on any of the consent agenda items? Not, we'll move to public hearings. I'll open the public hearings and we'll start with 8A.
Ordinance number 2022-06, An Ordinance Amending the Future Land Use Element of the Comprehensive Plan of the City of Orman Beach by amending the future land use map to change the designation of one parcel of real property totaling 0.35 plus or minus acres located at 722 South Atlantic Avenue, Volusia County Property Appraiser Parcel 4223-10-02-0050 from low-density residential, LDR, to tourist commercial, TC, providing for conflict, authorizing transmittal, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2022-06, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards.
I move approval of ordinance number 2022-06.
I'll second. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8B.
Ordinance number 2022-07, An Ordinance Amending Paragraph C Official Zoning Map of Section 2-01, Established of Article 1, Establishment of Zoning Districts and Official Zoning Map of Chapter 2, District and General Regulations of the City of Orman Beach Land Development Code by amending the official zoning map to rezone certain real properties totaling 0.64 plus acres located at 215 Benjamin Drive, 225 Benjamin Drive, 229 Benjamin Drive, and 233 Benjamin Drive from B-7 Highway Tourist Commercial to Orman Beach R-3, Single Family Medium Density, Authorizing Revision of Official Zoning Map, Repealing All Inconsistent Ordinances or Parts Thereof, and Setting Forth an Effective Date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2022-07, read by title only.
Thank you. And again, I don't have any cards.
I'll move approval of ordinance 2022-07.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8C.
Ordinance number 2022-08, An Ordinance Amending Section 4-3, Consumption in Public Places, Exceptions of Chapter 4, Alcoholic Beverages in Section 15-92, Definitions in Section 15-99, Display Promotion or Sale of Alcoholic Beverages of Article 3, Special Uses of City Property of Chapter 15, Parks and Recreation of the Code and Ordinances of the City of Orman Beach to allow for the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages on city property pursuant to a written agreement approved by the City Commission between the City of Orman Beach and a civic nonprofit organization, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2022-08, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. And I'll ask our Deputy City Attorney Anne Margaret Emery to speak on this item.
Good evening. This ordinance change is really just taking what already exists, and that's for nonprofit organizations. If they buy special permit or by agreement, the ordinance already provides that if they have a permit or agreement, they can provide beer, wine, and champagne. This would expand the types of liquors that could be provided by these organizations. Instead of talking nonprofits, excuse me. If this ordinance is approved, these nonprofits would have to come and ask for approval. And then you could review whether or not in each circumstance if it's appropriate. And those agreements we would review and make sure they have the appropriate licensing by the state, the appropriate insurance, and it's appropriate for the setting, security, liability, all those things. I anticipate what would first come would be a request from the museum as they're completing their project. I know they want to expand the type of events and would like to be able to do this. So then they would bring it forth as probably an amendment to their service agreement. We would review it all and then you would have a chance to decide. And then if it didn't go well, you would also have the ability to then, you know, terminate that.
Any questions for Anne Margaret?
I want... I'm just curious, would the approval be event-specific? Or like in the case of the museum where they're, you know, they could have multiple events for various parties or occasions or whatever, do they get approval one time, sort of a blanket approval? Or do they have to come to the Commission for each activity?
I would anticipate their amendment to their service agreement would be more of a blanket. It would be up to the museum to make sure that they have, you know, the proper security, the licensing, appropriate vendors, you know, and all of that taken care of. But it probably would be very difficult if they were doing weddings and all kinds of events to, you know, constantly have to come up. So the agreement would provide for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
I move approval of ordinance number 2022-08.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8D.
Ordinance number 2022-09, An Ordinance Amending Section 2-258, Administrative Fines and Leans of Division 2 Enforcement Process of Article 7, Code Enforcement of Chapter 2, Administration, Section 8-4, Unsafe Building Abatement of Article 1 in General of Chapter 8, Buildings and Construction Regulations in Section 14-98, Leans in Article 8, Site Maintenance Nuisances of Chapter 14, Offenses of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orman Beach to amend the authority for the release and satisfaction of leans, repealing all inconsistent ordinances and parts thereof, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2022-09, read by title only.
Thank you. And again, I'll ask our Deputy City Attorney to speak on this item.
Thank you. The amendment that we're asking for here tonight is really just to simplify a process that we have to do anyhow. And that is when someone pays a code enforcement lien or even a demolition lien, you know, any kind of lien that's a fine or a cost of a city, if that's paid in full, then the city is required by law to execute a satisfaction. And what we've been doing in the past, and there's been some good at that because it's very good record-keeping, but all these things do get recorded in the public record. So there's always a good way, you know, to be always, to check the record. So what we have been doing is bringing those to the Commission. And it's really a pretty time-consuming process. And also by law, we have to do these pretty quickly and can get pretty close to it. I think these can be done in finance and kind of get it moving along. And also sometimes when we have a code enforcement problem, the property changing hands and a sale sometimes helps solve the problem. So we want to, you know, sometimes make sure these go smoothly and as quickly as we can so this can hold up a closing. So we would like to be able to do that. Really, it just cuts out the, you know, unnecessary step. There are occasions when someone will come, and I don't think, we've had one in a few years, where someone has a big fine and they want to come and they want to seek a reduction. Now, that's something that would still come to the Commission. This would only be those cases where someone has paid their fine lien in full.
Any questions for Attorney Emery? Thank you for that. I don't have any cards.
I'll move approval of ordinance 2022-09.
Second.
Moved and seconded. For discussion purposes, I just want to say thank you to staff for bringing this to us. It makes so much sense. And it streamlines the process. It really is an administrative function that we don't need to be involved in. So thank you for that. And with that, if there's nothing else, Susan, please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8E.
Resolution number 2022-55, A Resolution Pursuant to Section 8-4, Subsection 8, Leans of the City of Orman Beach Code of Ordinances, Authorizing the imposition of a lien against the real property located at 72 Warwick Avenue, Orman Beach, Volusia County, Florida, Parcel ID Number 4240-01-15-0390 for costs incurred by the city to secure and demolish an unsafe structure and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2022-55, read by title only.
Thank you. And I'll ask our Planning Director, Stevens Braker, to speak on this item.
Good evening, Stevens Braker, Plan Director. The property at 72 Warwick had an unsafe structure as determined by the city. There was a process to seek to bring it into compliance. That failed, which then led to demolition. Staff is seeking to place a lien on the property to recover the cost. Staff's available if you have any questions.
Any other questions? Commissioner Selby?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I just have a comment. And the process, according to the write-up, involves the chief building official, the city engineer, and the fire chief. write-up, involves the chief building official, the city engineer, and the fire chief, all agreeing that the structure needs to be demolished. I don't know how you all feel about this, but I think this, I think we should also recommend to staff that they bring back to us a ordinance change, not for this particular situation, but in general, to allow staff to do this. I mean, I think, you know, I trust them. They know, they know whether or not this, and if the three of them agree that a structure needs to be demolished, let them move forward with it.
And Steven, any, any thoughts on that? I mean, I'm sure maybe you discussed that, or maybe Randy or Joyce?
Yeah, Randy might help. So the structure, to be clear, the structure was demolished. I think this, this process is to place the lien on the property.
That's the same. Yeah, really. I mean, that.
Right.
So they have the authority to, to order the demolition, and this is to place the lien. Okay, so then, so, so Randy, did staff have that authority, or does it take the commission to basically?
Let, let us take a look at the legal requirements, and if we can do it, we'll bring it back to you.
Yeah, great.
Appreciate you catching that. Commissioner Selby, and thank you, Steven. Off, a little off-topic, Commissioner Selby, but just like your point about the impact fee credits out there at the US 195. I think, I mean, that was a great suggestion for streamlining something. I think staff is now including that in the review, that, the report that we're going to get, the impact fee analysis, and maybe that's one other thing that we can streamline. So anywhere we can do that is great. All right. I don't have any cards on eight E. I move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we will close the public hearings and move to nine A.
And leisure services director?
Can I just speak to you?
Okay. City manager, Joyce Shanahan.
Commissioner, I received a call from Paul Hollab a couple of months ago when we were moving ahead with the outdoor gymnasium. And Mr. Hollab explained to me that he thought the gymnasium was a great idea, but he also felt it was very important for the kids that live in the South Ormond Neighborhood Center to still be able to play basketball outside. Mr. Hollab plays pickup basketball still regularly. It's amazing. Couple days a week. And he explained to me that when he was growing up, kids didn't automatically go inside to play at South Ormond. You kind of had to get your feet under yourself, and you had to build your confidence to play with the big guys inside. And so he feels like this is an integral part of that community. And he offered to design and build this facility over at South Ormond because he also felt that South Ormond was the important place for this basketball court to be. And so he chatted up with Robert, and so he's drawn some designs. He's willing to put in all the work and all the costs. In addition, he's going to underground the lighting in that area as well. It's already staked out, if I'm correct, Robert, you can see it's over near where the baseball. Do you have a picture?
Taylor says no.
You've got it on your, in your packet.
In the packet, absolutely.
So, so that's what he's asking is, he was willing to donate this to the city, and I need your authorization to accept that offer of donation.
And I think he was changing over all the lighting to LED as well.
The whole place, the whole place.
The entire, yeah, not just the basketball court, which would be a great cost savings. Commissioner Kent?
Yeah, thank you. I am so grateful that Mr. Hollab is going to do this at South Ormond Rec Center. And I'm not, I'm not going to repeat everything Ms. Shanahan said, but that's the exact conversation he had with me, Joyce. And he talked about those kids that aren't ready yet to play inside, and they need a place outside. And then he talked about the cost savings with changing out all of the lights to LED, but also how much brighter and safer it makes. And, you know, years ago, I found out that one of our star police officers, Greg Stokes, thinks very highly of Paul Hollab, and Paul Hollab thinks very highly of him. And they met at South Ormond Neighborhood Rec Center, playing those pickup basketball games. And I love that he goes there weekly and picks up those games. It's part of his workout regimen. And he cares enough about our city and our community. And of course, I'm thrilled for our entire city, but, I mean, this is zone two as well. So I just, I just wanted to throw that in there and publicly wanted to say thank you very much, Paul Hollab.
Thank you, Commissioner. Deputy Mayor Persis?
Yes, and I would just like to add, I'm absolutely thrilled about this idea. And I know that former Commissioner Rick Bohm is going to be like jumping up and down with glee about this also. Soon as he get, when he finds out, when soon as he gets back from going to the Final Four, that he and his wife have been in New Orleans, I guess, the last few days. So this is going to make his week really special. So I just do want to, you know, send out my thanks to Paul Hollab for always supporting Ormond Beach.
Great. I am very pleased with what's going on at the SONG. A lot of great improvements. Drove by it on the way here tonight. And, you know, there's some amazing outdoor workout facilities. There's a splash pad. There's now a new gymnasium coming. It'll be two covered basketball gymnasiums. And we're getting that picture up there. And then there's also the, this new outdoor lighted basketball court. And there's tennis courts there, too. And I can remember playing tennis as a kid there with my grandmother. She was great at it. I was terrible at it. But it was still an amazing community asset at that time, and it's just flourished. And just like, you know, in the Belushi County school systems, there's amazing things that happen in the classrooms every day. A lot of magic happening as far as kids learning and, and lights going off in their brains, just the education process. A lot of wonderful things happen at the South Ormond Neighborhood Center, whether it's stretch, working with kids, disciplining kids, talking to kids, whether it's the officer that Commissioner Kent mentioned, playing basketball with Paul Hollab, and also having interactions with the children. It's just an incredible community asset that sometimes, if you don't live in that general area or don't have another reason to go there, then you would never know that there's all kinds of wonderful things happening. Also, there's an amazing indoor recreation facility, workout facility. And I don't think a lot of people necessarily know about that, but it's an up-and-coming place, and this is just going to enhance it even further. So Joyce, do you need a, like, a motion to accept the gift of this? Or what are you looking for from us as far as direction?
I'll be glad to make that motion to accept the gift.
And I'll be glad to second it.
From Paul Hollab.
And I'm happy to second it.
By Commissioner Kent, seconded by Commissioner Persis. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Reports, suggestions, and requests. And we start with city manager Joyce Shanahan.
Just a brief reminder that on April 19th, we had a shade meeting with the commission to discuss collective bargaining. We will be primarily discussing general employees and fire. As you all know, the police union is looking to change their representation. So we have not yet met with them. Once they finish going through the Public Employee Relations Committee process, then they'll come back and vote on a new union, and we'll come to, come to the bargaining table at that time. And then on May 3rd, we tentatively have the impact fee workshop, and then after that, a reclaimed water workshop. Let's see. We have also, staff informs me that the contractor has nearly completed the removal of the debris on 365 Old Kings Road. And the property looks very nice, and so we're pleased with that. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the city manager? All right. We'll move to Assistant City Manager, Claire Whitely.
Yeah, good night.
Thank you. And city attorney, Randy Hayes.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Randy. And we start tonight with Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you, Mayor. Items eight D and E, as the mayor stole my thunder a little bit already, brought up something Commissioner Selby talked about last meeting about the impact fee credits and making that a staff-level decision. And I wanted to publicly say that I would approve of doing that. And finally, tonight, I wanted to thank Chris Mason and his team for responding so quickly to an issue on Arroyo Parkway. And they did a wonderful job and are taking care of that issue. And I'd also like to thank Terry Hampshire, for those who don't know, is the executive secretary of Ms. Shanahan here, for her part in that as well. And with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Selby?
No comment tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Kent?
Yeah, just, just one quick one. If you have not been to the movies on the Halifax, take your family and go for the first Friday movie. It is a free, fantastic, wholesome evening with your kids, or your grandkids, or your loved one, or yourself. And bring a, bring a lounge chair, and, and enjoy what the city, what your city offers you because Ormond Beach is that incredible special place. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Commissioner and Deputy Mayor Persis?
Good evening again, everyone. I just was so thrilled that we recognized Julia and Evelyn tonight, and Stevens Breaker for all their hard work. Truly well, well deserved. Just, just wanted to get that out there. I also wanted to thank the pastor this evening for your comments about the Ukraine and your prayers. And, and I, I wish there was more that we could all do, but thank you for that. It spoke, spoke right to my heart. So I appreciate that. I just also wanted to thank the fire department. And I, I guess it was about six weeks ago, and I can't, with HIPAA laws, I can't mention any names, but a very good friend of mine had a, basically had a bleed in his stomach and was bleeding out. And they called, you know, 911, and the fire department evac was there and like, you know, the, the wife said, like, three minutes, they had to be nearby, she said, because they were so close. But basically, if they had been any later, this gentleman would have passed away. But they got him, they got him to the hospital, and he's doing great now. But it was really a matter of life and death. And I just want to mention how important your services are with police and fire in our city, how, so important. And we don't realize things they do like that every single day. They save lives all the time. And I just want to personally thank you all for your service to our city, both fire and, and police. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And just wanted to give a quick update on the Transportation Planning Organization Executive Director search. I've been volunteering on that committee, and it's been a grueling three months of meetings to, to try and find somebody. We had five candidates that we were going to fly in for, for interviews. And a week before the interview process, which was the 31st and the 1st, four of them withdrew. And so we were kind of left flat-footed. It's a difficult time in the economy. They call it the great resignation, but for people looking for jobs and people applying for jobs, it's a, it's a hard time for the search director who we hired to help us with the group, Doug Thomas from Strategic Government Resources. He's an excellent professional, very knowledgeable in what he does, but it's, it's hard for them as well to bring qualified candidates. And so what we did as an executive director search committee was suspend the search. And, well, we recommended to the full board that we suspend the search and that we go for six months with the interim director right now, which is Colleen Nicolin. And she's been doing an amazing job, kind of has grown into a situation where a lot of people are believing in her that she might be the right candidate for the job, and it'd be an opportunity to, to promote from within. So we're hopeful that the full board will accept that recommendation. I, I think they will. Either way, Doug Thomas recommended a, a six-month pause. So we don't really lose any time. But Colleen may end up being the right, the right person for that. And I think we had to go through the search process kind of to get to where we are now. And if she ends up getting the position, that'll, it'll just be a validation of that. So I wanted to keep you all informed on that as we move forward. Finally, I think it was Sunday night, I watched an episode of Undercover Boss. I want to say it was on ABC. And it was Mayor Aquinetta Warren, who is the mayor of Fontana, California. And she went out undercover. They disguised her. And she rode with her police department. She rode with her fire department. She rode with her public works department, which I think we've all done to some extent or the other. And then she also went to their version of the Environmental Discovery Center and met with a young lady who was running programming there at their environmental discovery center. And as I watched it, and these are amazing people working in these municipal jobs, I thought, I thought of our own Ormond Beach employees who are just as amazing. I mean, for every person that she worked with and they highlighted on the show, our city had somebody who was equally as impressive and dedicated in the public service. So I was really pleased with that, disappointed that they didn't come to us. Of course, Fontana, California is just east of LA. They're four times the size we are. Maybe a little, little more glitzy and a little easier to get to for them. But the one quote she said is, "Our, our employees do the hard work that makes us look good." And I thought that was so true, and true to this day, even here in Ormond Beach. So I just wanted to leave, leave on that note. And with that, we will be adjourned. Good night.